It has to pick a place. And they run against candidates that follow that place. So we go to the place one, place three. The city of Lakeway, the election's a little different. Everybody runs and together, the mayors don't. The mayors run, whoever gets the most votes wins. The council members, they all like five, there's three spots open. If you guys don't know, we have one incumbent running, which is Gretchen. And then we have two open spots because those council members are not running again. So we have five candidates running for three spots. So the top three vote getters win. Does that make sense? So you can vote for one, you can vote for two, or you can vote for three. And there's strategy. I have friends who really wanted Kelly Brettonson last year, and they just voted for Kelly, right? They didn't want to dilute their vote. So everybody has a strategy about how to vote for council members. But we have five running for three spots. So here they are. And we're gonna, I'll let them introduce themselves. I think they're a little more unknown to us than potentially the mayoral candidates. So I'm gonna give them a couple of minutes to introduce themselves and tell us who they are and why they're running. So.
What's your name?
Hallie. Hallie. Hallie is gonna time them, since there's four of them, we don't want to be here till midnight. So we're just gonna give them, we're gonna give them maybe three minutes to introduce themselves, and then on the questions, they'll have two minutes. So we'll start over here on the right, since that's where the microphone is.
It'll hold for one, we have one minute left in thirty, thirty seconds left.
All right, Kevin, you wanna go first?
Yes, and I can do this in two minutes. My name's Kevin Burns. I have a law degree. I've been a real estate developer and asset manager. I've been the CEO of a multi-generational family office. And today, I run an institutional money management firm that I founded almost 30 years ago. I'm a newcomer. I got here in 2019 when I retired from the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. I worked there for eight years, half-time patrol, teaching at the academy, doing some other things. In my last five years, I was in a specialized detective assignment. And when I retired, I was a sergeant on homicide team at major crimes. I'm very proud of that. But as I say, I met a woman who lived here in Texas, retired in 2018, and got here as soon as I could. So I've been in Lakeway since 2019. I got here, started trying to help out. I'm on the Rough Hollow South HOA Board. I was appointed to the City Building Commission and have served on that for a couple of years. I'm a director of MUD 11. I'm a lifetime member of the Sheriff's Association of Texas and the 100 Club of Central Texas, because I think those things matter. I stand for lower taxes, responsible spending, and a fully funded police department. There's anarchy next door in Austin. They can keep Austin weird. I'd like to keep Lakeway Lakeway. I love it here. So my name is Kevin Burns. I hope you'll give me a look and vote for me for city council. I'm reporting for duty.
Thank you. Dan Bardell. My family roots go back deep in Texas, but being a military family, I ended up being, well, actually, my brother and sister were both born on marine bases, and then I ended up being one of my dad had moved on to the FBI. So I wasn't born in Texas. But after I got an engineering degree and an economics degree, I immediately moved back to Houston, and I've been in and out of Texas ever since the early 90s. I have a long history here in Lakeway, about eight years, that I have spent much of that time volunteering with the city. That's one of the high priorities for me. I've been volunteering from the time that I was in Houston, when I spent some time in California, and then when I came back here. I think that getting engaged, being involved, supporting the community, is just one of those fundamental values that we all need to share. We want our communities to thrive, you have to donate to it, you have to contribute to it, you have to invest in it. And that's something that's very important to me. So I've spent the last, let's see, in 2018, I was asked to be part of the first major revision to the comprehensive plan for Lakeway that we had done in 15 years. It took us about a year and a half, and we, after a large number of interviews, a large number of conversations with people all over the region, all manner of citizens, we reviewed it with the citizens in 2020 and got it approved with council. And that's sort of the basis for a lot of what's going on in Lakeway now. Comes up in, I see Mr. Cohnine out here, comes up in a lot of the conversations that we have, when people are coming forward and looking for how to work with the city. And so it's a very important document, and I'm glad that I was able to get started on that and really form a solid foundation for understanding, you know, what was working in Lakeway, what wasn't working in Lakeway, and what we need to do to make this town better and thrive well into the future. Beginning in 2018, I began serving on Zapdo, that's the zoning and planning commission. I currently serve there now. We work on a lot of the technical details of how are we gonna make things work in the city. And let's see, there've been a number of other things that I've been involved with over the last couple of years, primarily the gardens that we were just talking about, trying to bring community gardens to the city, give just one more opportunity for our neighbors to work in their area, beautify that area, and hopefully grow some vegetables. It's one of our, one of the goals that we're still trying to bring in with the new master plan. So again, Dan Bardell, one of the, hopefully, more well-known on social media, we'll talk about that more in a minute, but I'm here looking for your vote for city council, and I hope you'll give it to me soon.
All right, my name's Chris Forten. I've been a Lakeway resident since 2014. I serve on the zoning and planning commission. I'm actually the chairman of the zoning and planning commission. I've been doing that for about five years now. I like to volunteer a lot in the community, not just with my kids' activities, but you know, with them, with their, you know, their sports. I've been an LTYA coach. I'm a prop dad for my daughter's dance team. I'm a prop parent, build the props, do all that kind of stuff, which is always a lot of fun. I've been, you know, active in the community, volunteering within the city, volunteering with them, you know, a lot of times even in an informal capacity during Stonemageddon back in 2021. Everything was shut down, people were without heat, without water, I was out delivering water, you know, pallets of water, cases of water and food, firewood and space heaters. These people had electricity, those people don't. And so everybody was kind of sharing, but they needed a way to get it back and forth. So I jumped into gear, because I used to be a firefighter and hurt my back, couldn't do that anymore. So I have just years of pent-up wanting to help people. And I really got to, I really got to fulfill that. I dropped my wife off at work, and she'd be saying, she'd, well, actually, when I picked her up, "Man, you're just living your best life right now, aren't you?" I'm like, "Yeah, I kind of am." So, you know, I really enjoy helping people. It's just kind of my thing. I love the city. Couldn't think of any better place to live than right here in Lakeway. Obviously, y'all care about it as well, because, or else you wouldn't be here, you wouldn't care about what we had to say or what was gonna happen, because, but I think everybody thinks that this, this place is really great. And that's pretty much it. I did wanna say, I know there's a lot of, you know, contention sometimes with elections. I know there's a lot of people don't get along. After this, I'm going to the corner pub, I'm getting a beer. I'm hoping that everybody here, whether you agree with what I say, or whether you don't agree with what I say, let's join me. We can all have a drink together, doesn't have to be, you know, awful all the time. Let's have some fun. And like I said, I'm gonna be there regardless, so whether you agree with me, whether you wanna vote for me, whether you don't, that's perfectly fine. I, hopefully, you'll consider me your vote for this election. But if I'm not, come have a beer with me. I'm not buying beer. Make sure we're clear on that. But I wanna make sure that everybody knows I'm gonna be going down there. And come on down, let's have a drink together.
Thank you, Chris. My name's Kent O'Brien, and I am running for Lakeway City Council. I'm excited about it. People ask me quite often, Kent, why are you doing this? And I say, it's because I'm called to do it. And I've been feeling that calling for a long time. But it's amazing how things, when things line up, how the calling comes to place. And doors just opened up in many different directions, and I was willing to step through those doors. And now I'm running for city council. I'm extremely excited about it. I've lived here, my wife and I moved here in '07. Actually, we didn't get into Lakeway until '08. Probably lots of stories of folks like that here, but we've been living here since, for 15 years. When I first got here, I served on the Parks and Rec Board for approximately three years. I am a practicing registered professional engineer with a focus in civil engineering. And I've been working for and with TechStot for 40-plus years. I've done projects just like 620 several over the years. I've done projects just like State Highway 71 several over the years. I've worked with municipalities and counties and done roadways exactly like what we have in the city that need improvements today to help move traffic more efficiently and safer. I'm an expert in that, bringing my background and my credential to the city council that's not there today, maybe never has been there. I look forward to bringing that credential to council to help us as a city take care of our needs relative to whatever that might be, whether it's 620, whether it's improving a street, whether it's improving drainage, whether it's making sure we have water and sewer where it needs to go, working with our police department, making sure that they're empowered to do their job every day, making sure that we're working with our regional partners. You will find me, everything I do focuses on three Cs. And when one of the Cs falls apart, the stool falls apart. Collaboration, coordination, and communication. Everything that I do relative to my career, and what I will do when I serve on the council working for you, will be based around those three Cs. And if we're not doing those three Cs, then we are failing ourselves, and we are failing our citizens, and we're failing our region. We must work with our partners, TechStot, LTISD, City of Bee Cave, The Hills, LTFR. I could just go on and on, right? But if we're not working with those three Cs with all those folks, we're not doing the best job that we can do as a council for each of you as taxpaying citizens in Lakeway. So I'm gonna go back to the Parks and Rec. I'm also a successful entrepreneur, successful businessman. In 2012, my wife and I opened O'Brien Engineering Services, working right here in Lakeway. We were office in Lakeway. We formed it specifically to serve Lakeway. We did projects like the parking lot improvements at Hamilton Green Belt. We did projects like the new sanctuary and parking lot at the Lakeway Church. That's what I will bring to city council. I look forward to being your next city council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Okay, you can start, since you have the microphone.
I don't wanna start.
You don't? Sorry! Okay. With the lack of confidence in our electronic voting machines, would you ever consider returning to a paper ballot for City of Lakeway elections? Why or why not?
So would I consider it? Yes, if that's the will of the people. The city council serves at the will of the people. And if that's what our citizens decide they would like to do, then we'll work to make that happen. There's been a lack of confidence across the nation. We heard a little bit about it in the previous, and I think that spills off into the local elections like Lakeway, and raises a little bit of concern, and maybe the hackles on the back of folks next. And so is there a way that we can assure that the votes that are cast are accurately counted and recorded and reported correctly? Yes. And I think we, again, as citizens, need to assure that that's being done in an appropriate manner. We talked, you know, there's a lot of talk about what happens if you go to a paper ballot and all the security, good words, Tom and Ron, all the security that goes around that. But if that's the will of the people, then we'll figure it out and we'll make it happen. And so I'm not scared of that. And that's what I'm gonna be doing when I work on the city council. Thank you.
All right, I would have to agree with Kent there, that if that's what the people want it, then absolutely, we're here to represent the people, and that's essentially what it comes down to. If people say that's what they want, that's what, we'll figure it out, we'll make it work. I know there's been a lot of irregularities around the country with a lot of different, you know, voting systems. I think in Texas, we're a little bit better shape than we are, than they are in some of those other states. However, again, this isn't the Chris show, this isn't the Dan or Kent or, you know, Burns Asher. This is us representing you all. So if that's what people want, we'll figure it out. If they don't want that, we'll continue doing what we're doing. But what's most important is making sure that our elections are secure and that people's voices are being heard.
Yeah, I love this question. You're asking the guy who's spent the last 40 years building a career in high tech if he wants to go back to paper. You know, I mean, I've spent the last probably 30 years traveling the world, putting at some of the largest, most complex computer systems for some of the biggest companies in the world, and you're asking me if I don't trust computers. So look, when you have a problem, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's my opinion. People have to have confidence in their elections. I mean, it's fundamental to a democracy. If we don't have confidence, we don't have elections, we don't have a government, and everything falls apart. So the first thing is confidence, the first thing is the will of the people. If we ended up in some crazy situation where the demand is, hey, we've gotta go to paper, I would be fighting it. I'd be looking for every other solution short of that. I don't believe that's the right way to do it. I don't believe the costs that come with it. The paper is extremely costly to deal with all of that and all the time that it takes. I would certainly fight it. But the first thing, and now we're gonna do the hypothetical, what's really going on? But the first thing is that we get an election that works and everybody has confidence in. So I would have to start there.
Yeah, clearly, clearly what we, what we do has to work, and people have to have confidence in the result. Now, I can tell you that we're not using Dominion voting machines. You know, our voting system here in Travis County is, was developed by a company called ESS. This is pretty much all they do. It's a combination of technology and paper. You hit the touchscreen, the card spits out, you look at the card, yes, that's how I voted, you put it in there. So I'm not aware of any complaints or issues or problems locally, but were there to be any, they would need to be addressed, whether that's with paper or something else. But for sure, they get addressed.
Being that Biden last week said that we are gonna have a second pandemic, if mask mandates or forced business closures return due to a future pandemic, knowing all we know, knowing what we all know now, would you vote to stand against a Travis County order and risk the alleged consequences?
I hand you Governor Abbott's Executive Order 38. Face coverings, mask mandates, forced vaccination in Texas is a misdemeanor crime. So no, I'm not allowing mask mandates. And I have a story. Can I have a quick story?
Can I give a minute and a half?
I can tell it in a minute and a half. Kate and I went down to the Travis County Clerk after Executive Order 38 was issued to get our marriage license, after waiting two years for Maui to, you know, figure out how to admit tourists, and they never could. And so, all right, well, she says, "I've been engaged for..." I hear you, honey. So down there we go, and the deputy sheriff says, "You can't come in without a mask." And I said, "Oh, no. No. Governor's Executive Order 38, no masks. It's a crime." He says, "Well, Travis County Judge Andy Brown says you have to wear a mask." I said, "Where is he? I will arrest him." And the deputy says, "Well, fortunately, he's not in the building." And I said, "Okay, well, you are." And Kate says, "Hold on, you're losing sight of the objective here, Kevin. I'm getting this off about this." And I said, "You're right." And I shook the deputy's hand, took the mask. I said, "You know, two armed peace officers, one active and one retired, trying to arrest each other over a mask. I'm the, I'm the common sense, pragmatic guy." So, but yeah, no, no masks.
The issue that I have with the hypothetical is, it presumes the pandemic. It presume, it's a political phrase, question that presumes a health crisis situation. The next pandemic may be completely different than the current pandemic. The next pandemic may, you know, we were hitting 3,000 deaths a day when the masks first started. We may be at 3,000 again, we may be at 5,000 or 10,000 a day. There may be a legitimate reason. So I'm gonna start with what's going on with the pandemic that we're facing. When we end up in a situation like we did at the end of this pandemic, where we had a bunch of requirements and restrictions in place that clearly run their course, and we're no longer adding value, and we're slowing down our economy, okay, now we've got a problem. Now we've got something that we vote against.
I'm a big proponent for individual choice. People should make a decision that's best for themselves. Shouldn't come from above them, "Hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do that." In this particular situation, I think a lot of us found out that, yeah, the masks didn't work. To Dan's point, who knows what'll happen in the next one, but we, they should've been listening to the science and not to the politicians and doing just what they wanted to do. So I think in the previous pandemic, and I hate when you keep talking like the next one, it's like it's a foregone conclusion, but it's probably going to be because they, they found out. Anyways, I won't put in the net.
You had a minute and a half.
No, no, it'll take at least an hour and a half. But, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I paused your time. I am presenting, I understand that I'm presenting you with the hypothetical.
Right. So I was gonna, I get a little long-winded sometimes, but I'm coming back around to the answer. So to answer your question, though, no, I would not support a mask mandate. I feel people have a right to choose what's best for them. I didn't support the vaccine mandate. I still have not been vaccinated. Anybody's breathing around me, sorry about that. But it didn't make sense, after I had had COVID and survived, why I should be then forced to get a vaccine. I wouldn't go get the flu vaccine. After I had the flu, I already fought it off, and it's just common sense. So I think a lot of this that happened, people weren't following common sense, and that got us into trouble. So again, individual choice, don't support mask mandates. Let's make sure that the people have what they need in order to be able to live their best life.
Can you repeat the question for me again?
Sure.
Not part of my minute, two minutes, is it?
Being that Biden said last week that we're gonna have a second pandemic, if mask mandates or forced business closures return due to a future pandemic, knowing what we all know now, would you vote to stand against a Travis County order and risk the alleged consequences?
So would I vote to stand against?
Yes, because, like, yeah.
Just clarify, just, would I vote to stand against?
Right, the county says, "If you don't close and require masks, then we're gonna sue you."
I got it. My answer is yes.
Okay.
I would stand against, make sure that we get the ballot language right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you can go first on this one. Lake Travis ISD Elementary Number 8 was its plan for Bee Creek Road. It will forever be a commuter school and serve Sweetwater, a neighborhood outside of Lakeway. If the city, this is hypothetical, if the city grants the ordinance waivers, what are the positive and negative outcomes if the school is permitted to build on Bee Creek Road?
So remember when I said early that how I would function sitting on council and the three Cs? I'm going to commit to you, there's another seed, right? I'm committing to you tonight that we, as a city, with me on the council, will be working very closely with our partners at the school district. We will be working very closely with our partners at the county. We will be working very closely with our parties, with our partners at the City of Bee Cave. We will be working very closely with our developer partners as well, relative to how do we provide for the education needed in this community. As a city, it's shameful that we force our school district to do things without an appropriate level of the three Cs that are associated with providing for our community. And I'm committing to you again tonight, I mean, again, that I'm gonna be working with the school district to assure that the schools are built, and we're doing the right things we need to do for our children and their education. Now, if a school is built in that location, I can tell you, one of the things that we're gonna do, that I'm going to work on with the council, is we're gonna apply those three Cs. What is the city's responsibility in supporting the school district relative to putting a school there? That's roadway improvements. If there's signal improvements needed, then we'll work to get those signals warranted, because that's part of the requirements for a traffic signal. Drawbacks are the fact that just we've got traffic all overs out there. Everybody knows that. We put another school there, there's more traffic. We have to figure out, how do we accommodate that traffic in an appropriate and effective manner, so that it doesn't become more of a negative relative to, again, providing for the education of our children? I wanna be sure that the school district has a good master plan that says what is their build-out for schools, and I'm gonna be working with, with them very closely on that. Thank you.
I'll start with the positives, because it's a short list. Positive of the school was built there is the school district alleviates the congestion in one of the schools nearby. We have other capacity in other schools that they could do that with, but that would be the only positive I would see of that school being built there. Negatives, let's see, there's the increased traffic on Bee Creek Road in the morning, the afternoon. There is the entire community that now has to cross over 71. They will never be able to walk to school, they'll never be able to ride their bikes to school, they'll never have a community built around their school. There always gonna be a commuter school. People kept saying, "Oh, no, this is a Rough Hollow issue versus, you know, Sweetwater, or this is a Sweetwater versus Lakeway." No, this was everybody against the school board. It was an awful location for the school. Jennifer, you were there, you spoke on it. I was there, I spoke on it. I understand they have a, they have a problem that they're looking to fix, and that was their easiest solution. I understand that. I can, I can respect that, and that's what they're trying to do. They're like, "Hey, look, it still shows in our demographic, this current demographic study, that that's an appropriate location. We know the next one isn't gonna show that, so if we can hurry and shove it here now, we can just wash our hands of it, we're good." That's not the right way to do it. That's, that shouldn't be what they're trying to do. And I'm glad that the council voted unanimously to shut that down, because it isn't right for Rough Hollow, it isn't right for Lakeway, it isn't right for Sweetwater. There was so many negatives that were gonna come out of that. And then when he had said, "Hey, look, you know, well, it's gonna alleviate congestion on day one, because you're taking all these kids and you're putting them into two different schools." Yeah, on day one, I get it, you're, you're absolutely 100% correct. What about year five? What about year 10? That's what we gotta look at. So you're always gotta be looking a little bit further on down the road. So the one positive was what it was, but it spilled in a lot more negatives.
Pretty much covered it. I'm just gonna add that it was a short-term problem. We need a long-term solution. It was a short-term solution, I guess I should say, to a long-term problem. It was a bad idea. I, you know, I won't repeat everything Chris just said, but he's exactly right. That school needs to be in Sweetwater. They spent nine years trying to build it in Sweetwater and didn't get it done, and they came to Lakeway at the last minute and said, "Fix this problem for us." It was just a terrible approach, that that's not the way that we need to be working through long-term problems for the community. Now, you know, I'm a little leery of some of the conceptual solutions that were thrown out a moment ago. You know, LTISD is a regional authority. They have the most professional demographic study on the west side of Austin that's done every year. Go out and put it online, they have a master plan. They have all these things in place, we participate with them regularly, we had multiple meetings with school superintendent and various members of LTISD, we were doing comprehensive planning. So all those things are in place. This particular school was just, the process was just mishandled, the way it was brought to Lakeway, and the way that we were asked to spin on a dime and try to help them out of the hole they were in. And so, you know, hey, I didn't vote on it, I wasn't on council, but I am glad. I think, I think it's difficult for the people with Rough Hollow, that are gonna have to put up with this for another year, that are gonna have some children that are gonna be moving back and forth to schools. And I think that's really a shame, but we're gonna get a better solution out of it, and that's the best thing.
I don't have a lot to add. No point beating the dead horse. My view is, it's our kids, it's their school, but if I'm on the city council, that's my road. And that is not a good place to put a school. So Lake Travis ISD, how can I help you solve your problem in another location? That is not the place.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start with you, Kevin. I should make y'all like do musical chairs, but no, I'm not going to. In an effort to lead a better approach, would you be in favor of a city ordinance requiring recusal from votes that directly impact one of your major campaign donors? I understand that major will have to be defined, so assume that major is defined in the ordinance. Would you be in favor?
So assuming I agree with the definition, the definition of major, then, then yes, but I will tell you that-
but I will tell you that, uh, my campaign is largely self-funded. I think the, uh, I think the largest, and I'm not soliciting donations, I've received some, I think the largest to date has been about $500. Um, if anybody thinks they can buy this ex-cop for 500 bucks, well, good luck with that. But, uh, yeah, if there's a perception that there needs to be an ordinance requiring recusal, um, you know, it, it doesn't apply to me, that's not my issue.
So stick with me here, cause I'm gonna give an answer that some people seem, seem to take the wrong direction. No, I'm not in favor of the ordinance, and that's because you don't write ordinances for ethics. Ethics and laws are two different things. Uh, you know, the famous quote about pornography, you know it when you see it. That's what ethics are. And when you see somebody who's up there on the dais, who is staying on the dais, voting on something that he shouldn't, and that comes out, or, or people know, it creates an appearance that is a serious problem for all of us, and it shouldn't happen. We don't need an ordinance for that. Uh, we need a strong ethics policy, and I, you know, that was hashed out earlier, I certainly agree with strengthening the ethics policy. On Zapco, uh, just this last week, I have a very good friend in Lakeway who was starting a business and brought it to Zapco. I'm not a business partner, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not getting paid, I'm not on his payroll, but I spend a lot of time talking to him about that business and how Zapco works, and how to go through the permitting process. And so when he came in, I recused myself just two days ago. Uh, three days, okay, what is today? Anyway, that, that's how I see it, thank you.
I would say, yes, I'm definitely for the ordinance. A lot of times when you give people the opportunity to do the right thing, they don't, and I think it's good to have that safeguard in place. People shouldn't be able to buy influence, and that's what it comes down to, is making sure that somebody isn't getting something for something else. So, yes, I would be for that ordinance.
It's a tough question, cause an ordinance means that we're putting something into law that now we have to define what the law is surrounding that. And so relative to that, I, I don't think I would support a new ordinance that's associated with that. I think we have, uh, some ethics requirements within the city charter that are already in place that have sufficient teeth, uh, that allow us as a council to assure that these, um, type of oversteps or oversights, uh, shouldn't happen or don't happen. Can they happen? Sure, they'll happen whether there's an ordinance or not, potentially. But I don't think adding another law on the books creates a situation for us that really helps. I would, I would say, I will tell you that absolutely I will recuse myself if faced with that situation. And I will also tell you that, um, by my commitment as a professional engineer, I would have to do that. Another thing I would tell you is that the company I work for has the potential to do work within the city of Lakeway. They're not currently, and they, but they have done, uh, work in the city of Lakeway in the past. Doesn't mean they won't in the future. If that should happen, I will absolutely recuse myself from anything associated with that, because obviously they're my employer, and I get, typically get paid on a regular basis, uh, in that work for them. So to another ordinance on the books, I do not support that. Recusing, one, uh, recusing it themselves relative to, uh, the, the thought behind the question, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, as a concern about censorship, would you be in favor, and try, don't get hung up on ordinance, the word, I mean, I might be using the wrong word, so you get the idea, the intent of the question. As a concern about censorship, would you be in favor of a city ordinance requiring disclosure of any social media accounts for which you are an administrator? And would you be willing to give up your administrative authorization during campaign season?
Yes.
I would say yes also. Uh, I feel that somebody that has that type of access definitely needs to be able to step back, unless that same access is granted to everybody on a 100% equal basis, which sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. And let's face it, that's all personally interpretive, is whether it is or whether it isn't. So I would definitely say that I think it's fair for, uh, somebody that has such a large platform, it's basically a town hall, to, uh, make sure that people know that and that they should definitely step down from that position.
So as probably, am I stretching by saying the only person who's actually in this position? Um, I, I'll give a little bit more nuanced answer. It, it's a little more complex than you brought up, right? Uh, so let me give the quick, the straight-up answer first. I am a lead on one of the local, uh, sites. I moderate content on that site and have for years, because helping the committee, excuse me, the community to engage, I think is, it's a high value for me, and I spend a lot of time doing it, a lot of personal time. Uh, as soon as I decided to run for council, the day I decided, I sent my first email to some of the other people that had been sort of known only for other reasons, and told them that I would not be moderating, that I was gonna run for council and I would not be moderating. I just did it, because it was the right thing to do, to, again, to avoid the appearance. Didn't need an ordinance to do it, I don't think we need an ordinance for that. I think people ought to just do it. I think that, uh, again, the appearance of impropriety is enough. Um, as far as disclosure and the ordinance go, I don't wanna get all technical in everybody, but, uh, it, it starts to create issues, it starts to create management problems, it starts to create authorization issues, there's all sorts of things that come into that that aren't obvious to people who aren't involved in running the site, and it would, it, it would create unnecessary problems, I would argue. Um, but the point that you're raising, extremely valid, support it 100%, and I would cover it under ethics as opposed to an ordinance.
Um, you're, it is not my issue. I don't mean to sound like a smartass, but I don't use social media. Now, my campaign has a Facebook page and all, all this other stuff, but I, not my issue. Uh, so don't use social media, but I will say that what Dan said sounded good to me.
I'll let you get away with that, but.
Thanks.
The hypothetical is, if you were an administrator of a social media site, would you recuse yourself during campaign season?
If I was, yes, I would. That would be the right thing to do.
Right.
Thank you.
You couldn't pay me to do that.
I hear you. Okay.
They don't pay me either.
What is one thing, so I'm skipping a question, because you guys covered it in your introductions, which is how you're involved in the city. So the next one, what is one thing you would have done different than the council this year?
I think, uh, citizen participation always belongs on the front end of the agenda.
The problem with citizens' particip- participation on the front end of the agenda is they often don't know what they want to say until they hear it, which gives it on the back end, so there's a balance there. But I would start with ethics, but since that's already been out of my mouth four times tonight, I'm not gonna say that either. I'm gonna go to next on my list, which is home occupation. The thing that, that city council gave this year that I didn't agree with is they, they fundamentally changed home occupation to be, uh, approved by a standard of reasonableness as opposed to a standard of imperceptibility. And when you have a commercial operation that is ongoing in a residential neighborhood, you are now imposing on your neighbors, uh, and, and there are good graces for you to make money. There's now a profit motive, that you're relying on your neighbors to say this is okay, or you're forcing your neighbors to become an enforcement arm to, to go and complain about you. And as soon as you're operating a business, as soon as you're making money for something that is, that is imposing on your neighbors, uh, I just, I feel like that has to be something near imperceptible. You know, we all work from home, uh, there's no problem with that. A lot of it, my wife runs two businesses out of our house. Nobody would know, except for the Amazon guy who comes late six times a day. But, you know, it, it, as soon as my neighbors start to say, oh goodness, he's running a business out of his house, now we've got a problem in the community. And I, I'm just not real comfortable with where the city is on that at this point in time.
Thought a lot about this question, uh, didn't really disagree with a lot of the decisions that were made over the last year, so, um, I was really struggling to find something, and finally it done, I mean, the one thing that I probably didn't like the way it's been handled was, uh, it actually has to deal with home occupation, but it was the, uh, the young lady with the daycare. You know, she wanted to have a couple of kids there, there's other daycares allowed that the people actually have in the city. If you're gonna allow consistency, I'm big on consistency, it's another C. Vote for Chris. Vote, vote for Chris, that's a big C there. But that was one of the things that I didn't agree with. I, when it came through Zapco, I voted that she should be able to have that daycare. I believe I was the only one that voted when it first came around, that she should be able to have that daycare. Couple of kids in her house, I, I don't have a problem with that, I don't see an issue with that. Uh, when it came around again, the ordinance had been changed and it was pretty much a no-brainer. So my problem is, is telling somebody that, hey, if you want, you can have five kids, but if you have three kids, you can't have two kids that you're watching. So where, where do you draw that line? I think now, with what she's requesting, I think that does turn it into a commercial business, and it's a little bit extreme now this way, but the problem is, is that if she had just been able to have the two kids, and this would all be behind us, we, the city wouldn't be in litigation right now, we wouldn't be actively fighting this. So a lady could watch two kids? I mean, to me, I think it's a little bit, uh, it, it didn't need to happen. If we had allowed it initially, it's all would have been behind us. Now she's asking for more than she was even originally asking for, so if she gets what she is now requesting, it's gonna end up being worse than it would have been. So that would be my big thing that I would, uh, be concerned about, or that was the one thing that I would actually, uh, question the city doing.
So I think some of the things that I would have done differently, that I have seen and experienced and watched and paid attention to over the past year, is that I would have liked to have seen council pay a whole lot more respect to you as citizens, and treat you at the level of respect that you deserve. I think that, uh, you need to be assured that when you come to council, that your concerns are heard, whether council agrees with them or not. You're given a specific amount of time to express that, and you should be given that amount of time to express it. And so when I'm sitting on council, you can rest assured that I will be focused on, on maintaining the decorum, maintaining the level of respect that you deserve as citizens of Lakeway and taxpaying citizens of Lakeway. So that's one of the things that I've seen over the past year.
Okay, thank you. This is, all right, this is a submitted question from the audience. Roads get all the attention, but Lakeway has also outgrown its parks and recreational spaces. We have the land dedicated, but not finished, as fields, courts, play areas, et cetera. How and when will that happen? Where is the planning for that? The recent issues with the pickleball courts on Sailmaster show that we need to plan ahead and not just react. So if you'll just comment on your, what you would do about the parks being expanded and improved?
Actually, I, I will tell you that I, I am really excited about the Parks Master Plan that has been presented. Uh, when I sat on the Parks and Rec Board several years ago, uh, many of the things that are on the plan today, we talked about at that time, and so I'm excited to, to see some of that, uh, get a little bit more elevation relative to, uh, becoming reality. Uh, parks, uh, parkland improvements, the live-work-play scenario, uh, each of you and myself as well, are, is extremely important, and making sure that our parks are, uh, the best that they can be, that they serve residents in the way that residents want to be served, whether it's pickleball, whether it's trails, whether it's X or Y, or whether it's Z. All of those things are important. Yes, we have parklands that, uh, uh, and projects that need to be moved along, and as, when I get onto council, I haven't been a part of that, the deliberations to this point, but I can, again, commit to you that that is a very important aspect, I believe, for the community. And, uh, one item that I'm going to be looking at, and, and that we talked about ten, fifteen, fifteen years ago when I sat on the Parks and Rec Board, was, uh, having a citywide trail system that also included a trail that went over to the high school, so that you give opportunity for students and others to utilize the trail to get back and forth to the high school without having to get out on 620, whether that be by road, by car, or whether that be walking along the roadway as it is today, or an improved situation with a sidewalk. I think that's an important aspect for the city that we need to be working on, and I, I will be, uh, focused on that, uh, intently, uh, when I serve on council.
I'll just echo Ken's point about the Parks Master Plan. If anybody has had an opportunity to see that, it's actually amazing, all the, all the parks within the city get updated, there's, it, it looks amazing. The only problem comes funding. It's good, it costs like 20 million, 22 million, if I added them all up correctly when I was looking through it, to fund all these park initiatives. So the one problem is, is funding. We need to, so we probably have to set some sort of priority as to exactly which ones we're going to attack first, do you go with the most outdated, do you go with the most used, you, where do you go with all this? So that would be question number one. The next question is, is, you know, to what extent do we build these out? There are some great ideas, and the Lakeway Swim Center has a, you know, there's a lazy river and all these different things. Do we need all those? Do residents even want all those? If you look at some of the reports, it didn't seem like a, a lazy river was something that was even high on anybody's priority list. So you look at the cost of what that's gonna be versus who's actually gonna benefit from it. Is it, is it worth it for the city as a whole, for all these individual things to happen? That's what we have to go through, that's what we have to look at. Uh, the Parks Plan is great, in fact, actually, y'all, when you're leaving, I've got my little info brochure, you could grab that. One of my top priorities is our parks and trails. We also need to make sure that we're protecting and enhancing our trails. If any of you get ever get out and walk the trails, you'd see, a lot of them are in pretty bad shape. A lot of the trees from the freeze in 2021, and the most recent freeze, have, have damaged a lot of the trees, they've fallen over, they get into the trails, it becomes a hazard, it's a fire hazard, so it, it's not good for canopy growth or for, you know, animals living around there, trying to create a, you know, good ecosystem and everything's dead around you. So we need to make sure that we're, we're focusing on the parks that we have, how can we improve those right now? The trails that we have, how can we improve those right now? And then look to see, what can we do additional in order to make sure that these other things happen in either a timely manner or whatever type of funding needs to happen in order to get these things processed.
What are we, 15, 20 minutes?
Two minutes.
All right, I'm gonna talk really fast and try to keep up. Like Ken says, that, uh, the items, uh, he worked on the master plan back when he was on the Parks Commission, he's right, it was over 10 years ago, it was 12 years, some, somewhere in there, correct? Uh, when I came to the Lakeway in 2015, I was coaching a soccer team, we went out to Ranger Field, and the, the field is just a mess. And I immediately went to the city and, you know, why, why isn't this invested in? What are we doing here? And they said, oh, that's part of our Parks Master Plan that we've been working on for a while. And I said, how long? And they said, well, you know, like 67 years, and nothing's happening. And it, it was just, once I started asking questions, it was just a never-ending story. So when I moved on to the comprehensive plan in 2018, guess what I did? I wrote the chapter in the comprehensive plan on parks. I spent months working with Friends of the Park, working with Andra and, and the different authorities, and trying to put together that master plan and help get that moving, and not just as part of the comprehensive plan, but let's put some wheels under it, let's actually get this done. What is it gonna take? And we started working with Mayor Sandy Cox at the time, and we really put a lot of work into it, and it was moving forward, and we were doing the, the gardens that I was talking about, we, we started, okay, I won't go into all the detail, but we had a lot of stuff going, and we had a lot of momentum, and it was great, and COVID hit. So where are we today? We have all these great plans, and we've only added some more since then, and we're trying to figure out how to fund it and, and get things moving again. I want to see momentum in that plan, I wanna see pieces starting to get done, and I wanna point out, I'm gonna step on the third rail here, that everybody talks about, you know, I want lower taxes, that's one of those campaign things that people like to throw around. Well, I'm gonna tell you, when they're saying that around here, they probably don't know what they're talking about. 92 some odd points, 93% of your taxes are somebody else. It's not Lakeway. Your Lakeway taxes are 7%, and they've been coming down every year for, I think, the last four years. We are lowering our taxes maybe a little too much, maybe we put a little bit back in there so that people pay 40, 50 dollars each for the year, or 100 dollars for the year, and we fund our Parks Plan. That's the type of conversation I think we need to be having.
Yeah, the biggest line item on my tax bill is the school district. Um, but I, I said I loved living here, and I do, and one of the reasons is the outdoor recreation opportunities, not, and I don't mean just the lake, I mean, we use the, the trails and the bike paths and those things, and I will tell you, I've, I've looked at Dan's work, he did a good job, thank you. Uh, so, so that's. So that needs to be moved along and that's one of the things, I said, low taxes and responsible spending. And that's one of the things that we responsibly spend money on, our green belts and our outdoor recreational infrastructure.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you the less, the yes or no questions and then that's going to be the end of our time here. So, I'm going to ask you all four and you're going to answer all four at the same time. Would you allow workforce housing, yes or no, in Lakeway?
Yes.
Would you vote in favor of home daycares?
Yes, depending.
Would you require further disclosure of 501(c)(3) donations that give back to city employees?
Absolutely not.
No. Your answer's no. Yes or no?
No, no, damn it.
Would you allow commercial flights or flight school out of the City of Lakeway Air Park, yes or no?
No.
Would you allow workforce housing, yes or no?
Yes, it would be illegal not to.
Would you, would you vote in favor of home daycares?
Yes, I do.
Would you require further disclosure of 501(c)(3) donations that give back to city employees?
Would I require disclosure? Yes, I would.
Further disclosure than what was voted on this year?
Yes, I would.
Would you allow commercial flights or flight school out of the City of Lakeway Air Park?
No.
Chris, would you allow workforce housing in the City of Lakeway?
Yes and no. I don't mean to sound like a politician. When it was, I had voted. All right.
Yes and no. Okay. Would you vote in favor of home daycares?
Yes.
Would you require further disclosure of 501(c)(3) donations that give back to employees?
Yes.
Would you allow commercial flights or flight school out of the City of Lakeway Air Park?
No.
Ken, would you allow workforce housing in the City of Lakeway?
No.
Would you vote in favor of home daycares?
Yes.
Would you require further disclosure of 501(c)(3) donations that give back to city employees?
No.
Would you allow commercial flights or flight school out of the City of Lakeway Air Park?
No.
Oh, we have another question. Go ahead and keep that. What committee would you want to liaison on? I don't know if that's grammatically correct. What committee would you, would you add or remove? Try to keep it short because, let me just tell you, we are down to six minutes, so like one minute. What committee would you want to be a liaison and what committee would you add or remove?
Well, I think with my credential and my background, I would certainly want to be the liaison with the traffic and transportation part of our committees within our city. What would I want to get rid of? I don't know that I have an answer. I don't know all of the committees that are within the city to know whether or not any should be gotten rid of or should be, all should be kept, or maybe even add if it gets to that.
I've really enjoyed being on the Zoning and Planning Commission, so I would have to say I'd really like staying on that. Hopefully I get on council, but zoning and planning is a great committee to be on. As far as getting rid of anything, I don't, wouldn't get rid of anything. I mean, if people are willing to volunteer their time to be, you know, serve on a committee, whatever it is, I mean, just because it may not be important to one person, it's important to somebody else. Obviously, they're volunteering their time in order to be on that committee, so I wouldn't get rid of anything.
And what about add? It's add or remove.
Absolutely. If people want to, if people have something they're passionate about and they want to add a committee, something to the city that they're willing to volunteer for, I think a city full of volunteers is, I mean, that's the best case scenario.
I would definitely liaise with Zapco. It's just too much important work that goes on there. In terms of removing, I would not remove any. I think volunteering around the city and giving opportunities for citizens to engage is just critical. And we have a lot of very good vibrant committees and I would certainly keep them active. In terms of adding, I would, so as part of the comprehensive plan, one of our recommendations was that we add an economic development committee. That has been done, I believe, under Mayor Keel Gore, and I would expand it. I would make it an economic development and investment committee. I think that we need to start putting some real teeth in a longer-term, 10-year-plus plan for Lakeway and that we have to really do some hard work if we want to have a vision for this city that we're going to work towards in that time period.
So I've enjoyed my time on the City Building Commission and I would look to liaise with that, assuming, assuming Gretchen doesn't mind giving up the slot. She's our current council liaison and I've enjoyed working with her. Like these other fellows, I would add anything that anyone is passionate enough about to want to spend their time on. And I probably wouldn't get rid of anything that we're doing right now. There seems to be a need for pretty much all of it. Thanks.
Okay, let's give them our applause. I really appreciate all of you and Mayor Orkans too. I really, really appreciate you. One of the things that We the People cares about is that voters become informed, that they're informed voters, that they don't go to the ballot and do like any mini-money mo, or that they don't call us and ask us who they should vote for, but that they actually come to forums and do their own homework. So I really appreciate you guys making yourselves available. Thank you so, so much, everyone else. I just want to mention really quick, just as a plug for We the People. We the People on May 18th, they're going to host Laura Logan at the Lakeway Activities Center. If you go to We the People Lake Travis, there's a, there's a link to buy a ticket. She's awesome. I don't know if you've seen her in the news lately. She's talking a lot about the border and doing a lot of stories coming out of the border. So it's going to be a great event. We're at a 250-seat capacity and we're over halfway sold out. So, if you want, if you're interested in coming, please buy your ticket and come in. Am I forgetting anything else? Oh, real quick, not to bash Lake Travis ISD, because I know I'm probably guilty of that a little bit. Just like all over the country, we have very graphic, sexually graphic books in the LTISD libraries. LTISD is not worse than other school districts, so I'm not saying they're worse than others. They're just the same. We're making a little bit of headway at the school district. They did finally form a committee or, and they're doing some book reviews. So I'm just encouraging you to pay attention to that issue, potentially listen to a board meeting because they're talking about it every month right now, and just know that that's an issue and a problem and parents need to be aware. What else? Where, what else? Am I forgetting anything? It's so bad.
Good job.
November 4th, November 4th, I know it's a long way away, but we have an annual gala every year on the Saturday night between early vote and general election day. Last year, we had 250 people. This year, we're going to have 500 is my goal. We're going to have it at the Iron Wolf Distillery. The owners there are patriots. They're super excited about hosting us. She like texts me once a month. Are we still doing it? I'm like, yes, we're doing it. Like, we're on the calendar. So, anyway, I know that's really far out, but November 4th, please join us. It's a blast. I'll make a plug for ARW. ARW is hosting Chip Roy and Wes Verdel of GOA at Star Hill Ranch on Hamilton Pool Road on, I think, May 3rd. That's also on our website. So anyways, Chip Roy is always fun to go see. He's not perfect, like, nobody's perfect in this room. But he's always fun to listen to, so he's going to be here in the neighborhood, which is kind of fun. I think that's it. Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. And this whole forum will be on our website for anybody to watch whenever. Yes.
Remind everybody the election schedule?
Yeah, so early voting, I think, starts April 24th through May 2nd, May 2nd. And then voting is on May 6th. Sometimes I think we forget because May 6th is a Saturday and, I don't know, I always think election day is on Tuesday. And so, May 6th is a Saturday. So please, yes, and you can vote at the Lakeway Activities Center, Beet Creek Gala, Beet Creek City Hall. And, oh, not? Sorry. Okay, where do we have it? Lakeway Activities Center only?
And then the Travis County locations that are yet to be built.
ISD Service Center on 620.
Okay, so the Lakeway Activities Center is the easiest one to, for most people to get to. And what's kind of fun and different, this, I don't know about fun is a weird word. Fun and different about this election is we're not voting on school board. So it's only the City of Lakeway Council members and mayor. So, it'll just be a small little group. Well, hopefully a big group. There's other forums. Jarry's. Jarry's having a forum, is conducting a forum on April 25th at the Rough Hollow Welcome Center. And then the Lakeway Civic Center is having a forum.
13th.
The 13th at Lakeway Activities Center. Right? Is that it? Is there any other forums, guys, that you want to talk about?
There's a Democratic Club Forum.
Okay. At where? Do we know?
Activity Center on 18th.
Lakeway Activities Center on April 18th at what time? Nina?
Yes, we're talking.
LT Democrats, it's 6:30 at the Activity Center on 18th.
Okay, 6:30 on the 18th at the Lakeway Activities Center is also a forum. So, please encourage your friends, neighbors and family to attend the forum. This is how we inform ourselves and make, and make a good voting decision. Okay, love all of you. Thank you for coming. Bye.